I think everybody is here. All the councilmen are here. Okay. We're gonna get started. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
A roll call.
Reese?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Addy?
Here.
Elder?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Leibold?
Here.
Okay. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Madam President, on advice of our city law director, I would like to scratch. I'm gonna say the first, the second.
Not yet, Danny.
I'm talking about the minutes from the last meeting.
Sorry.
That's all right. Anyways, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? Then they'll stand as they are. Also, council has a copy of the agenda for this evening. Are there any current additions or deletions from the agenda?
Sorry about that, Madam President. This time, hopefully, I get it right. On advice of our city law director, I would like to delete. Reading number two.
Remove.
Remove reading number two. Remove reading number three. And are we removing item number four, Mr. Melly?
What is item number four, Mr. Addy?
About the policy and procedure manual.
Just the two on the policy procedure manuals, what I've, what I discussed with you about removing.
Okay, not the one, the first three, second, second item number two, the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent.
No, not that, just, just the two on the amendment of the procedure manual.
All right, so I would like to remove number three and number four. The three and four from our agenda tonight.
Second.
Okay, Danny Addy moves to remove. Item number three and item number four from the agenda, Chris Leibold seconds, could I have roll call?
Lee? Lee?
I'm mute.
He's mute.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Nope.
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Leibold?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, those two items are removed.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22G4, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment with council business to transpire thereafter?
Okay. John Elder makes a motion to go into executive section. And Chris Leibold seconds. Do I need a roll call on this, Jim Melly?
You do.
Okay, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Leibold?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, where, are we gonna go into executive session right now?
We are.
Okay, so. Where's Ken Frost?
I'm here, I'm here, Madam President. Okay, so I'll be, I'll be inviting. People to breakout room here. So be ready.
You should be going too, Jim. I'm guessing, without knowledge of how this works, we hang out here until they open it back up.
Yeah, they'll send us back in when they're done.
All right. You're muted. Charlie? You're muted.
You're muted, Charlie.
Hey, we may get in trouble, all three of us here.
No, sunshine law allows us to meet whenever, but if we use any of the information tonight to make a decision, we have to replicate that in session. No, it's.
I'm not gonna, I don't think we need to make any decisions.
No, we've been through so many sunshine laws. But we can be in the same room together as long as you don't use that information to make a decision.
I watched. Gibsonberg, Gibsonberg's meeting was just on Facebook tonight over there. They had, there was a. No old business, no new business, just a mayor's report, so there was nothing there.
Did you get a phone call, Charlie, from Dewine Houston reelection campaign lady?
I got a, a message, but I was out pretty much most of the day and I haven't returned the call yet.
Okay.
Hey, just a point, we're being recorded, so it's okay, we talk about anything we want, we know we can do that, I just don't want anyone to be surprised. I got that call too, so it was nice to hear from the governor's office.
Yeah, I don't think there's any problem keeping it general like this, keep a general conversation. I seen Dewine was on the, made a remark that he wants the numbers to go down one out of 50 or something like that before he opens everything up. So. It, that's a low, low range. It's gonna take a long time to get down there. I think we're at like one out of every 60, 167 right now.
Yeah, something like that, we gotta be down, what, 100 below 100?
Yeah, it's like to 50, it was pretty low.
I mean, I think if we're under 100 per 100,000 population, then we drop a class.
Yeah.
We go back orange.
I don't know, obviously, we don't know what they're talking about executive session, but we could be sitting here for 45 minutes, you know that.
Yeah, I don't know what's, does anybody have a look at what's on the, their agenda for later on?
Yeah, I sent, that should be part of that email you received.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't get the chance to read all the way through.
Or attachments, one of them's the agenda. And. It's regular business, I guess.
Yeah.
The way I describe it.
I think, I don't know if I'm gonna sit here all night or not.
Well. At that point, Charlie, I think, you know, we're all trying to do our part in.
I think just getting our names on it, yeah. I think we're doing a good job.
Yeah, you, you hit Gibsonberg tonight, so that was really good that you did that and.
Well, you can't do much, you can't do much when you're just on Facebook, there was no way of them, you just kinda watched it on Facebook. That, that's how they've got it, so.
Right.
You know. That's about it.
So we can hang out here a little bit, Russ and I, don't, don't feel like, if there's a real issue for you to listen in, I think we could call you back or.
Give me a quick call, phone call, I might start helping Julie, she's over here packing and everything, trying to get ready to. Enjoy the trip.
Right. No, I don't know that there's anything specific going on tonight that's gonna draw much more interest. It's just, we're trying to stay, you know, doing our community part by sitting in a few of these.
I agree, looks like Russ is in his officer, you got the world map behind you or what?
Yeah, world in the United States and the county.
Yeah, you didn't know that we handled the world, you thought it was just the county, Russ?
I thought it was just the county, right?
I see your.
I got, if you look behind me, I got my belt buckle display on back behind me there and there, on the other side of the door, big Massey Ferguson belt buckles.
That, that. What I wanna say, turn over to a dinner plate?
Yeah, you know, I, I had them in the bedroom and Julie goes, that's not a good spot, right above the bed there. You know, what are you gonna do, notch them things or what? Oh, they're, they're coming back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, everybody made it back, made it back safe.
Yeah. So we can move forward with the meeting, correct? Where's Jim Melly? He's not back, oh, he's there.
Yes, I am, yes, Madam President, we can reconvene the meeting.
Okay. The meeting is reconvened and we'll start the readings.
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing fund transfers in the amount of 16,750,000. For the year 2021. For the state of Ohio and the United States.
Does anybody wanna speak to this? No? Go ahead, Paul.
No, I was just gonna reiterate from our last meeting, this is just our annual. Transfer authorization ordinance and there's no need to suspend rule four, so we can just let it go all the, all three readings.
Okay. Okay, that constitutes the second reading of that ordinance. Next reading.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor and safety service director to enter into an employment contract with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent OPBA, representing the records clerk of Fremont Police Department and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend rule four.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Angie Reese moves to suspend rule four and Chris Leibold, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay, Chris Leibold seconds, is there any discussion? On the suspension of rule four? No? Roll call.
Addy?
I'm mute.
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Leibold?
Yeah.
Reese?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
John Elder moves to adopt, Chris Leibold seconds. Are there any questions? On this ordinance from anybody? No? Okay, roll call.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Leibold? Lee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance is approved. Next reading.
First reading of a resolution by the Fremont City Council endorsing and supporting passage of the proposed bill to rename. Route 21. To Charles Woodson. Declaring an emergency.
Justin, did you wanna speak to this?
Yes, there is a group of Fremont city representatives, along with representatives from the schools, that will be joining a press conference in Columbus on March the 10th. I think this is an important thing to recognize Charles Woodson for his accomplishments. And I think it could potentially help Representative Quick and Senator Wainikee and other leaders in the state support recognizing Mr. Woodson's accomplishments and the positive influence he's been and the citizens of Fremont. Therefore, due to the timeline and wanting to get this done by March 10th, I would make a motion to suspend rule four.
I second it.
Justin Smith makes a motion to suspend, suspend rule four and Jim Slick seconds. Are there any questions, does anybody have any questions for Justin about this? No?
I do.
Actually, wait, Angie, this is, any questions on the suspension of rule four? So I need roll call.
Reese?
Reese, yeah.
Leibold?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
You're frozen, Stevie.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, we can.
Now we can't.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Sleek, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, no, I can't.
Hey, Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that everybody?
Yep.
Somebody.
Move to adapt.
Justin. Justin Smith moves to adopt, Christine Lee seconds. Any more questions for Justin, did somebody have a question for Justin about this?
I did, I did, Madam President.
Go ahead.
Where is this? Route 20, where is it gonna stop and where is it gonna end?
I believe it is the bypass area behind the high school in the Vanguard. I take it, I'm not 100%, maybe the mayor would know, I take it that it's gonna be the bypass behind the high school in Vanguard.
Yeah, I can answer that question, Mr. Councilman Smith.
Okay.
In fact, Mr. State Representative Gary Click is, is also on the Zoom, I believe. Mr. Click, are you there, Representative Click, are you on? Okay, I see his name, he may be muted. So this would actually cover the entire bypass, starting from east side to west side, city limit bypass. The. The, the reason, you know, Gary passed, or excuse me, Representative Click, myself and Justin Smith had discussed this and. This is something that we think's important to our community, is Charles Woodson is more than just a football player, he's a leader, he's. Showed a lot of perseverance, in fact, he's a huge mentor and to a lot of kids in this community, it's important that everyone that drives through the bypass on Route 20 inside the city of Fremont and outside the city of Fremont knows that this is the hometown of, of Charles Woodson. As we've all known, many of his accomplishments that he's made, he's been a leader off the field and on the field. And not only this, I just, as I, if I could, just plant a seed, plant a seed with council, myself and Mr. Auditor, Paul Grau, and I have been working on some things from the city's end. We're gonna be coming to council here, possibly on the next meeting, to try to, we're putting together a plan to clean up Woodson Way. If council recalls. Several years ago, I wanna say four, four years ago or so, Mr. Damshooter presented to council how important this moment would be as Charles exited his NFL career and that the city of Fremont really had an opportunity to, to show Charles the appreciation that he's done to not only represent his family, but also our community and the entire city here. We're looking at getting Woodson Way cleaned up, that, that alley is in desperate need of repair. And quite honestly, it's embarrassing to, to Charles and his family to see that alley and the disrepair that it's in. Mr. Grau came up with some great ideas on possibly some type of archway. Chief Dean Bliss is very close to the Woodson family, so he is working with me on that as well. And we're coming up with some designs and I'm hopeful that between, between myself and Mr. Grau and Chief Bliss, we could have something at city council on the next agenda item. There are gonna be some plans. And I can't discuss them all right now, they're still in the making. But I can tell you that we are gonna make the homecoming of Charles Woodson and historical weekend of the city of Fremont.
Thank you. Anyone else, Paul?
I just had a quick question on the, the naming in the resolution, is, is it Charles Woodson Way for the highway? Or is it gonna be Charles Woodson Highway, not that the alley as Woodson Way is gonna be confused, obviously, with the bypass, but. Um, I just thought, you know, it might be a little bit more appropriate, kind of how you see veterans memorial highway or, or other types of acknowledgements. If, if maybe it's not gonna give names, Charles Woodson Highway instead of just Way, so just curious.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Melly, and when I talked to Representative Click, he told me that it was called Woodson Way, I asked that before I drafted the resolution.
Is it too late to change it?
I don't, I don't think we have that power, Mr. Reese, that's up to the, to the legislator.
Representative Click, if you're there, would you? Like to change that?
Councilwoman Reese, I will talk to Representative Click tomorrow and give him that suggestion, hopefully that don't change what we're gonna do tonight, but. You know, if we, we could give him that suggestion.
I mean, I think the resolution clearly, clearly shows we wanna support the naming of the highway after Charles Woodson, what, what comes before and after, I think the, the sentiment is there and it's not binding anyway, so.
Yep, I agree, thank you, Councilman Leibold.
Somebody wanna make a motion to?
How already been done?
Yeah.
I just, I just need roll call, okay, roll call.
Leibold?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes, if you said sleek.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Danny? Gotta unmute yourself. Danny? Danny?
He's crying.
Can a thumbs up be a substitute?
Danny, thumbs up. All right, all right.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a good little note there, if your speaker's not working, just do a thumbs up if you say, if you mean yes. That worked out. Okay. I, I wanted to say that, for now, I think we're gonna continue, even though the COVID is getting better, we're gonna continue with Zoom meetings, probably until every single person that has had the opportunity to get one gets one. Their, their vaccines, I think that we, if, when we do have in session meetings down in the municipal building, I'm gonna require masks on everybody. Anybody that comes through the door is gonna have to wear a mask. I listened to the president, I listened to Dr. Fauci, I listened to Dewine and they all say, just because you got the shot doesn't mean you can't still get COVID. So. I think that we need to err on the side of safety. So my guess is, we won't go back into regular meetings until probably July. If everybody gets, starts getting their vaccines in May, you gotta wait another month to get your second vaccine. That'll be June. And then they really want you to stay away and not do anything for another month. So I'm shooting at July and it might not be July, but that's just a heads up for everybody.
Madam President, just to add, though, we have to make sure the law gets extended, cause right now, I think it's only through June 30th, so we'll stay on top of that and make sure.
Right, 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 and that's what I mean, as long as things are going better and all these mandates get lifted, then we'll proceed, if not, we'll continue to Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
So I'm gonna get some comments from people tonight. And Scott Miller, would you, do you have any comment or anything you'd like to say tonight?
I'm gonna unmute and I'm gonna surrender my time to our chairman, our president, the commissioners, Russ Zimmerman.
Okay. Russ?
Thank you, no, we're just, I don't know if Charlie is still back on here, he's getting ready to travel, I see he is up there, but. We're just making an attempt to, as the commissioners, we're going to all of the, gonna attend, you know, hit sporadically, the council meetings, trustees meetings, village meetings and everything else, so. This week, Scott, I think you were out in Ballville tonight, were you not? And.
Hey, it was James.
I was at Sandusky Township earlier in the week and so that, that's the reason we're on here and, you know, just to get, know people, the people know us, so that if we got something that we need to collaborate on or whatever, we know who we're talking to and that type of thing, but that's the, that's the reason for our visit this evening is just, we're starting this initiative and so we, we're doing it that way, so we got an idea of what's happening around our county and all the municipalities in the county.
Well, thanks for coming, we're glad to have you. Charlie Shroko, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I think Russ pretty much said it in a nutshell, so I'm with Scott, he's our speaker tonight, thank you.
Bob Gross?
All right, all right, thank you. I didn't really touch base with the mayor, I wanted to bring up, I think a couple council members were talking about it before we got started, but you may have seen it earlier this week. And here is the plaque that the, the city received from Site Selection Magazine for the Governor's Cup, for those that don't know, Site Selection Magazine is an economic development magazine that's been around for over 100 years. Each year, they do what they call Governor's Cup, which is about 600 micro metropolitan cities and surrounding areas. So more than 10,000, but about less than 50,000. And so it's not just the city of Fremont, but it has to have a municipality as part of it and then the surrounding community. And we're able to incorporate most of the county and so really is a, a really a good indication of our community, both city and county. The Governor's Cup and that this is the first time Fremont and Sandusky County has ranked in the top 10, we rank seventh this year. The state of Ohio is second behind Texas and if you do the projects by, per capita, we rank number one in the United States. And if you've seen the list, Finley was number one, Tiffin was four and Fremont and Looster areas tied for, for seventh, so. Some of the things that I reported out at the last council meeting in regards to the International Cushion Company coming here, bringing 75 jobs, Quality Steel adding 75 jobs in 19 and another 20 jobs is, is indication, one of the other factors is total investment cost and a lot of those projects are, are well within the millions for total investments for, for project and so. We should all, as collectively as a community, should take pride in that and understand and recognize we, we are heading in the right direction and, and there are jobs here. And if people wanna work, the, the jobs are, are available and more jobs have, I just kinda, I think I mentioned last time that 150 jobs. created, new jobs, not vacant jobs filled, but new positions created in Fremont in 2020. And then so I kind of paired that with the housing study for every three new jobs, you should project one new home. And so there is some growth happening here and, and it's because of some of the measures that not just the city, but townships and county doing. It's kind of led us to our, our highest ranking yet. Two years ago, we were 18th. Last year we were 14th and now we are, are number seven. So you know, we don't always get faced with, with good news, but I think that's a good news to report out about our community. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you.
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, what, do you have any idea, what, what, all the, the new jobs that have been created? Can you give us an insight, like what is the average pay at those places?
Yeah, but you're, it depends on the factory. You know, this is a real loose number. You're probably in the 18 to $20 an hour. I starting pay over the last couple of years have increased. And, and so you starting at 17 and some change, but you get through a probationary period of 90 days. And it's not long after one year on the job, you're right around $20 an hour. And those are, those are obviously with benefits, retirement, vacation, sick time, insurance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Justin Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to our city's economic development team for the award this week. That's a pretty big deal to Fremont and I'm very proud of the group that's responsible for that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mewers, Woko and Zimmerman for being here this evening. I think that's a great thing for the county commissioners to be collaborating with the cities. That's a thing we all support. And I'm proud tonight that we passed the resolution supporting changing the name of the bypass after Charles Woodson. Charles Woodson has been a great role model for Fremont youth and has accomplished a lot of great things for our community. So I'm proud of council and thank you for supporting that. And I have high hopes that next week, Representative Click, Senator Winkie, and I believe whomever else is involved with the press conference, we'll be able to get this passed through the legislature so we can change the name and honor Charles Woodson. That is our, well, the next meeting, we're going to change your clocks back, change your clocks an hour ahead. So be prepared for that as well. That's all I have tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Libel. You're up.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, let's see here. I think St. Patrick's Day is on the horizon, so I was make plans for that, have a traditionally safe St. Patrick's Day, but also a COVID safe St. Patrick's Day. Just a reminder of what I said last meeting about, you know, get, get your vaccine, call the board of health. You know, get on the list, see if you can be contacted or go to one of the other sites where you can get vaccinated and get on their list. And finally, just, you know, as spring sports are starting, I was at practice with my junior high kids today and I'm sure Coach Elder and Coach Grau have been busy as well. Just good luck to all spring sports as they get underway for a safe and successful season. And that is it, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, John Elder.
Thank you, Madam President. Just said, now that spring sports have begun, there's a lot more activities on our city streets and things. So I always worry with my track athletes when they campus at the high school of, they think sometimes they're bigger than the cars that travel on the roads and sometimes do stupid things. So just, you know, beware. Look out as you drive around Fremont, there's going to be a lot more kids. And I'd like to echo Justin, congratulations to the economic development team on a really good honor. And I know Bob, you've been working really hard at that and I think your work is showing great fruition. Congratulations. That's all.
Thank you. Stevie Martin?
I'd just like to say that the passing of the resolution for Charles Woodson is a very, very good thing. If you guys don't know, I do work in the athletic department at the high school and it's been very exciting these last couple of days. We, I don't know if it's a secret or whatever, but some football players that are going down on March the 10th. So we're really excited. And so I appreciate the council passing that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Wees. You're on mute.
Okay, there we go. Just again, we're excited about the Charles Woodson Way being passed. I think that's great. Also, congrats to all the hard work that economic development has done with our award that Fremont received. That's exciting. Shows that we're moving in the right direction. And I also saw that Chief Paul Bison started this week. So good luck with him in his first week and that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ken Frost?
Thank you, Madam President. That's correct. Christine, Chief Paul Bison did start this week. I actually had a very, very inspiring meeting with him this afternoon. He's got a lot of good ideas and I think we're going to see all, a lot of great things come out of that department with him in charge. One thing I do want to bring up to everybody as a reminder, please be aware that we are going to resume construction on Rossin Avenue. We're already staging equipment there. There will be closures at times. We're working with contractor to keep the lane of travel open as much as, as, as possible, but there are going to be times when the road's going to be closed, as well as a, one lane of State Street when they redo some water connections. I will do my very, very, very best to keep everybody informed of all closures and delays and detours via social media. But my advice to everybody is that if you can at all, avoid that area for the time being and let the construction workers work and hopefully get this project done and over with. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Addy.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do apologize. I was an imbecile when I was talking to everybody back there and you wanted a response from me. Another screen popped up from Zoom and I'm like, I couldn't see you, but you could obviously see me. You know, I'm sorry, not technologically advanced here.
Me neither.
Yeah. But I do want to thank the county commissioners for being here for our meeting. I wanted to ask them is, do you also do a Zoom meeting or a, a meeting where you can get in public and watch or not be part of it?
Russ is on board. It's, it's Charlie. But what we're doing, Danny and others, is we allow people to phone in and they can, and it's open to the public. So we do have people calling and listening to our entire visit or entire meeting. We only ask that when you call in that you state your name so we can add to the record. And you're welcome to come in and visit. The doors are open. We ask you to honor the mask and sanitizing hands and safe distancing.
Okay, well, thanks, Commissioner. What else? Once again, I'll thank the, the, the crew that cleaned up our streets and everything. Now that the major storms are over, they need a, a good pat on the back and say thank you for what you guys did. Also, I just want to congratulate Bob and the Rust administration for the Governor's Economic Award. Thank you guys very much. It's, you know, we need to be proud of the city and I think with the things we're doing here, we're well on our way. And thank you, gentlemen, very much. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Angie Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to congratulate to all involved on giving Charles Woodson the recognition he deserves. By honoring him with the naming of Route 20 bypass in his name, I think that's a great honor for him. And welcome and thank you for the county commissioners for visiting us with us this evening. I'd also like to congratulate to Fremont, Sandusky County for being ranked in the Site Selection MicroPolitan Top 20 for three years in a row. And Fremont is ranked number seven. This means that Fremont is progressing. Decisions made by Major, by Mayor Sanchez with the help of economic development, Bob Gross and Fremont City Council have helped to get us in this position ranked seven. This, these decisions prove that Fremont is progressing in its growth, a growth that must continue to meet all the needs of our community. Among these needs is industry to provide better paying jobs for our residents and at the same time, attract more business and residents to our community. With the, with more business and more people coming into work in our community, another of these needs is housing. We have new housing being constructed, but there are many older buildings that must be replaced. We need more housing. We have new housing projects that are being planned for Fremont. With the help of the residents, these new projects will help to provide needed new housing. I hope the residents of Fremont take this into consideration if they ever have to vote for any housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Slick?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, a shout out to the city of Fremont for our awards. And I want to personally thank Bob Gross for keeping me in the loop of a lot of things that with me working 10 hours a day at the school and stuff, a lot of times it's, we're talking at lunch and getting caught up on economic development. So representing the city council is economic development. I'm very proud to be working with Bob, the mayor and others. And we are headed in the right direction. I was going to, I want to elaborate what Angie says. With all the recognition we're getting in the city of Fremont, all the growth that's taken place, all the more support that we need housing and we need to get everybody on board to make this happen because we definitely need more housing. I want to thank the commissioners, Russ and Charlie and Scott for joining in. And again, with all the activities going on around town, once in a while I'm in a school bus and you see more and more activities. Just be cautious and make sure you're being aware of your surroundings with people getting out with the nice weather and walking. And great to be on city council, great to see the city moving in the right direction. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Chari Mullen?
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity. I would like to share opportunity the city just received with State Farm. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion submitted a grant proposal to State Farm in 2020 to help support the city of Fremont's Courageous Conversations. With the support of the grant, the city will be able to engage with the community at strategic outside locations, June through October. Dates, times and locations will be announced on the website and published on social media. Courageous Conversations will allow the diversity office to continue stage one, listening to the community and have discussions regarding the seven pillars of inclusion, which are access, attitude, choices, partnerships, communications, policy and opportunities. We were notified February of 2021 that we received the grant. Today, myself, Mayor Sanchez and Ken Frost went to State Farm and we, we were, we received the grant for $2,500. I have Dave Slater on the line. If you would like to speak to council regarding the grant.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, hey, thanks for giving me a minute. Really, I just wanted to, to say that when I went to State Farm in the last year and told them what the city was doing by putting the diversity and inclusion position in place, they were very excited to be able to help and, and, and turn us on to the State Farm Good Neighbor Grant Program that provided these funds. But I just wanted to say on behalf of myself and State Farm, how excited we are to be able to help out.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, are you done, Chari? Okay. Howie Elder?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to all the hard work that the mayor's administration has been doing to put Fremont on the Ohio map once again for development. That's great. And what's really interesting is that Fremont, Ohio is the only city in the nation that can tout, I used to say, a US president and a Heisman Trophy winner. So I think it's safe to say that Fremont, Ohio is the only state, city in the nation that can tout a US president, Heisman Trophy winner, and now a football Hall of Famer. So anyway, I think that is really fantastic and just adds to the excitement of what's going on in our city. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Groul?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just echo, echo the excitement of later this year and throughout 2021, you know, with working with the city and the schools and, and the county and the state with recognizing Charles, it's, it's going to be very, very exciting. Um, and congratulations, as everybody said, on the economic development. It's great to be in the top 10. Um, but we're, we're below Tiffin and I don't think Fremont likes being below Tiffin on stuff. So we got to keep working to get ahead of, to get ahead of Tiffin. So I know Columbia and Calvert, St. Joe, Ross, we don't, we don't like being behind Tiffin. So we'll keep working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I just want to thank everyone. I don't really, I mean, you guys covered, everyone covered so much tonight. As, as Stevie knows, Stevie and the school staff and myself and a few others, we are working really, really hard to really make this Charles Woodson Weekend a spectacular event here in Fremont. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful event. There's a, a lot of planning going on. It's, it's, a lot of things are very confidential because it's going to be a surprise to Mr. Charles Woodson. We want to make his homecoming something that he will never forget. Also, thank you to State Farm for taking acknowledgement of the importance of diversity and inclusion. Shari Mullen is a huge asset to the city as we all are very quickly learning. And also Bob Gross. It's funny to work with these two every day. I feel blessed to be able to work with. If you could just be a fly on the wall on days when Shari and Bob and I are in conversations about, you know, what, what direction we're going, what to do. And when you get cut in the room, it's just, it's a great environment up in the administration. So and without Nikki and Amanda who are not on tonight. It's, oh, I said Shari and I, I said I met Shari and Bob. So, so anyways, thank you to all of you. And commissioners, thank you for joining us tonight. They just, the collaboration is, is, is amazing in Sandusky County. And as Mr. Grau says, there is, there's a fun competition with Seneca County, with our friends in Seneca County. And it's just great for the entire area. So there's so much more I think that's going to come out of this. And hopefully our county and our city gets stronger after the pandemic and, and we continue to move forward. So just be apprised, the, the next council meeting, Paul and I hopefully will have a budget adjustment to try to get that Charles Woodson alley all cleaned up down there. Thank you.
Jim Melli?
Not tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
I see Amy Ridley, you're on. Did you want to speak, Amy? No. I see somebody named Ralph. And Mr. Carson, I believe you're from the newspaper. Did you have any questions? And Denise? No. Does anybody have any, any further comments or questions? If not, then I would make a motion for somebody to I didn't even get it.
Jim Slick, I moved to adjourn.
Okay, Jim Slick moves to adjourn.
Second.
Chris Libel seconds. Roll call.
Wees.
Yes.
Week.
Yes.
Sniff.
Yes.
Addie.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Libel.
Yeah.
Okay, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.